I'll call it's five o'clock, I'll call this meeting on. So, we pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, we please have a roll call. Greenway?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Sarda?
Yes.
Okay, we do have a quorum. Um, next item is approval of the agenda. I'm going to approve the agenda before us. Second? I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call please, Greenway?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Sarda?
Yes.
Okay, item number three, approval of the minutes.
I motion to approve the minutes of the November 12th committee for our legislative committee.
Second? I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call please. Mueller?
Yes.
Greenway?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Sarda?
Yes.
Okay, item number four is the approval of the conflict of interest. Now is the time to come forward if you have a conflict of interest, whether correct or incorrect. Your none will move on to item number five, consent agenda. Motion to approve the consent agenda before us. Second? We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Your none, roll call please. Greenway?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Sarda?
Yes.
Item number six is public comment. Did we have anybody signed up to speak today? No, we didn't. Okay. Move on to item number seven, which are good news and student achievement. So, Mr. Plammett will speak.
Good evening, school board. A few months ago, I talked a little bit about Project Search, and this was our inaugural year starting off with Project Search. So, tonight, I'd have Chelsea Howard, who's our day teacher at Paul Mardy University, with teaching skills in the morning and afternoon class. And then her and Christina Evans from ABS meet with the kids and check on all their, their job, tasks and duty throughout the day. So, Chelsea, you want to come up and talk a little bit about Project Search?
All right, so I guess first of all, what is Project Search? Because some of you have heard it, some of you probably haven't. Um, and so Project Search is a very targeted internship program for students, you know, who have intellectual disabilities, autism, things like that. Most of them are going to graduate with a certificate of attendance versus an actual high school diploma. And then they apply and they get accepted into our program. And we do very heavy life skills training. Like, a couple weeks ago, I took them to the log mat, you know, stuff like that. We go out and do things instead of it all just being in the classroom. You know, this is what we could do, so we go out and do those kinds of things. So, this is a nationwide program, actually it's international. We, there are 784 sites worldwide, they're in 48 states, 10 countries, and since 2010, they've served roughly 50,000 individuals. So, it's a local program. And so, our students right now are all interning at either, um, Avera, the main campus, or out at the Jesse Plucks. And so, we have, um, one is they're in their second rotation, so they do three internships during this full year, and so they're starting their second one. So, we have a student in nutrition services at the, at the hospital. We have one that is in maintenance, and he goes between, um, both campuses, and so he works both places. We have one in nutrition, nutrition services at the nursing home, and he, um, is learning more and more skills to actually be able to like serve and plate the residents' meals. So, he's getting like trained to actually be hired out there when this is completed. Um, and then we have another working in environmental services. Um, and so then the goal of all of this is for them to be hired, either at Avera or somewhere in the community, working at least 16 hours a week, um, at a typical wage. So, through this, they get to do three different jobs and learn, you know, transferable skills and hopefully find something that they can do lifelong. Questions? Anything else to add?
Is there a reason why they need to have 16 hours? Is that like the minimum yet they could be hired on full time for a 40-hour work week or?
Yes, that's for like the program globally. They want interns to be hired at least 16 hours a week. So, they could be hired 40, they could be, you know, 30, whatever. It's just, that's like the minimum threshold.
So, are you talking the intern or are you talking about when they're done and they get hired?
When they're done. So, right now, they're all working 20 hours a week in their internship sites.
Any others? All right, thank you very much. I just wanna just reiterate how personally I support our item of this program. I'm really pleased that our statistics taken this on. Okay, uh, next, Mr. Strilee.
Okay, I hope you can hear me. Thank you, everyone. Some of you may not know who I am. My name is Sean Strilee. I'm currently the assistant principal of the high school. So, I just wanna thank all of you for providing these opportunities to speak. I think it's important, uh, time to highlight the celebrations and tasks moving forward. Just a brief introduction, I started my career as an elementary teacher, and I've worked in education for a little over 20 years. I've had various, um, school administrator roles along the way, but I really wanna say just what a pleasure it is to work in such an exceptional, uh, school district. Uh, and I'm really thankful to be part of, part of this team. So, with that being said, uh, just a few highlights for Yington High School from this past month. We completed NCRC testing and makeups, uh, just completed this last week, and, uh, preparing for semester test next week, which is always, uh, as I've seen, uh, quite a to-do, actually putting those pieces together with the schedule, but, uh, that, that has taken place. We had a winter formal dance, uh, it was a huge success. It was fun being part of that. It's, it's been a while since I've been around, uh, that much loud music for that extended time. So, but it was a ball, uh, the students had fun and, and I see on tape because everybody was responsible. So, uh, just, just a really good time. Tomorrow, we have a mini, uh, mini maker camp, uh, Lake Area Technical College, uh, from Water Towns coming down. And they're going to, uh, work with our students, uh, following categories, 3D printing, soldering, energy systems, machining, uh, welding, and building a drone. So, a big thank you to Lake Area Tech from Water Town for coming down, working with their students on, on hands-on activities, and, you know, we can't get enough of those. So, excellent. Tonight, Mr. Morris and his team are hosting the winter sports kickoff banquet. That's starting, starting real soon. So, it takes a lot of, uh, a lot to run all these programs successfully in, in our district. So, there's so many moving parts, and I, I've just, I've sat back and, and just like wow, all the details that go into planning. So, a big, big kudos to Mr. Morris, Mr. D, and their office staff, uh, and coaches, uh, for keeping these programs running so smoothly. You know, the, the term, the phrase student athletes, I, I just greatly appreciate that our coaches have such a, such a priority on that word, student, coming before athletes. And that's really, really important, and I, it's really been a need to watch that, uh, moving forward. Uh, we had junior achievement for our sophomores, uh, junior achievements. Community leaders came in and talked to our sophomores about good choices and ethical decision-making, uh, especially as it relates to the workforce. So, we had that this, this past month. Community leaders have a huge impact on our students and, and a huge influence. So, we thank them, manager, uh, Sarda, thank you for coming. You were there as part of that leadership team. So, we really appreciate that. From my understanding, that's a partnership of over 10 years. So, we look forward to keeping that going. Holiday cheer, uh, it is the season, so, uh, Yington High School's been having a lot of fun. Holiday activities, had rolls this morning, and, uh, plenty of upcoming treats and activities. Not a time for dieting, uh, this time of year, uh, for sure. But, uh, the hallways have been joyful, and when you can do that with students, it, it really, really brightens that day. And, uh, had some fun dress-up days this last week for the staff. Grand finale was, uh, dress up like Mr. D Day and Harry. So, so they had fun with that and neat to see some of our staff leaders setting up and, and bringing in, uh, some of the holiday cheer. So, with that, the last, last thing I, I thought was important to mention is community involvement. It's crucial, as, as you know, while you're here, to get community and parent involvement. Many associate my position as assistant principal as a disciplinarian. I don't, I don't necessarily care for that term. I'd, I'd rather use, you know, terms like student advisor, student support. And, uh, that's really what we do, uh, in our schools. And, uh, and yes, disciplinary measures are part of that sometimes. But I just wanna emphasize how pleased I've been, uh, with the Yington, Yington community and, and parents. The overwhelming majority of our parents are, uh, wanna work to solve problems and, and work as a team. So, uh, it's really, really been a pleasure to work with and, and want to recognize our, our parents for their support and what impact that has on, has on our learning environment. We strive to go deeper in student interests, their goals, core things that might be chipping them up. It typically goes, uh, as you can imagine, way beyond the surface issue. So, I really enjoyed, uh, helping students find out what they're interested in and some of the barriers that are in their way and how to, how to chip away at those barriers. So, uh, I'm excited for the second semester, and, uh, with that, I'll, I'll entertain any questions from the board.
I don't have a question, but I just appreciated you coming in and kinda as a perspective, kinda telling us about our district. And I'm glad we didn't scare you wrong when we're talking to you during interviews about how, what an amazing, uh, district we have, so.
Not at all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, this isn't for you, Mr. Strilee. Sorry, you can go. This is something, this is another good news, I'm sorry. So, I know it's not on here, but this just happened like in the last half hour. So, I'm putting the school car away, and one of our bus drivers pops in to where I'm pulling in, and he's waiting. And it's, um, Roland Adam, and we just recently hired him. And he says to me, he said, "I wanna thank you for the opportunity that the school has given me to drive bus." And I also wanted to tell you how honored I am to drive those kids in that bus. And he, he has one of our special needs buses, and I just thought it was worth sharing. Like, it was just really sincere and nice, so I wanna recognize him for that.
Okay, we're gonna move on to item number eight, our legislator preview. And we have Representative Mike Stevens here to talk to us.
Good evening, everybody. It's, I appreciate the opportunity to come, and it's always nice to, uh, come in front of this board. I commend you for your work and your dedication, your willingness to serve in this capacity, which is an important thing it is. And I, so I think this is my 11th time to get to do that. And, uh, you know, I think it's really an important thing for the legislators to come before you and to discuss what's going on. It's really nice when I've been up in peer to be able to sit back and listen to everybody complain about what's going on in your district and then, uh, you know, find out all the things that we're doing here and a part of that are really ahead of the ball. And I'm sure a lot of people always say that about their group, but I think the truth of the matter is, is we're ahead of the game. And that's really nice, and that's because of the hard work that you guys have done in that regard. You know, some people might think, well, this is kind of a funny time to be talking about the legislative process 'cause the legislature hasn't started, and there's not very many, um, bills that have been proposed. But I think that's a big mistake to, to think that. Uh, I don't think during the times that I've been up in peer, and even looking back over South Dakota history, you know, the amount of change that is going to have occur and going to occur even during the middle of the session is, is, uh, historical. You know, I mean, uh, yes, we have different governors, but we don't usually have them during the middle of the term. When we look at the recent elections that we have, uh, the turnover, we always have about a third turnover of new people that are coming in. But when you look at the leadership change over the last two years, you look at the different committee assignments that have taken place. For example, last year, I was chairman of education, uh, and that group, um, and there's 15 on the House of Education, only five of us remain. So, there're gonna be 10 brand-new people on there that bring all kinds of different ideas as to, uh, education and how it is. And, you know, the tough part about the education committee, I think, is, is that everybody remembers what it was like when they went to school. And the problem is, it isn't like that anymore, as you guys know. And that makes it really, really difficult when you're trying to put some things together in that regard. So, you know, one of the bigger things that always occurs is you have to build relationships with people in order to try to get things done. And, uh, when you have that many new people, and the fact that, you know, we only have a 38-day session, and we have, you know, over billions of dollars in, uh, for our budget, that doesn't give you much time to, you know, to do. So, you're, you're really working real early in the morning till really late at night, trying to build up relationships and that type of stuff. This year, I'll be chairman of judiciary, I still will serve on the education committee. You know, there's always issues that, that come up every year. Of course, the budget is always one of those big issues. But I think this year, this year, the budget is gonna be, uh, even more significant than it has been for many, many years. I mean, we're finally getting to the point where that big goal of COVID money that came through our system is gone. I mean, it's flat out gone. And so, now we're really getting at a real, realistic viewpoint of what the real economy is in South Dakota. And I think that's really important for everybody to understand that. Because, you know, we, we hear some terminology that I think a lot of people don't really clearly understand, and I think it's important that everybody does know that. Of course, the governor has, required by the constitution to give a budget address every year. And that's the governor's budget. Uh, the legislature passes the budget. But in that, you know, uh, whatever she puts in her budget, that makes it more difficult to deal with within the budget as opposed to somebody bringing a bill. But there's a terminology that I think everybody really needs to understand because it's gonna become particularly important this year. And that is, you know, we talk about our constitution requires a balanced budget, okay? The school district has a balanced budget, you deal with that. But there's also a word that's even more important, and this is, comes into play, and that is, is your budget structurally balanced. You know, you can have a budget where you have, say, a million dollars, and that's the incoming revenue that you have to deal with, but you're a thousand dollars short. Well, you know, if you go and you pull it from someplace else to fill it in, that doesn't mean it's structurally balanced. That's maybe you've taken grandma's money that she gave you Christmas time to fill in, fill in the gap. And, uh, that's not a structurally balanced budget. And this year, we will not be, I mean, in my opinion, we will not be having a structurally balanced budget if we proceed as been proposed. And the reason for that is, is our economy is such where it's been estimated we're only gonna have $44 million in new revenue, okay? Well, we've already got, uh, I guess $86 million of mandatory expenditures that we have to make this year, so we're a forty-some million dollars could be short on incoming revenue. So, you gotta do one of two things, right? You have to find one-time money. And what is one-time money? Well, one-time money can be, for example, you know, COVID is a one-time money. Or you have, you have, uh, unclaimed property, that's one-time money. It's not money that you can count on coming in all the time. It's, you get grandma's money one time, well, grandma may not be here next year, and, uh, to fill that in. And so, if we're gonna, if we're gonna look at it from that kind of a standpoint, you have to be able to do it structurally balanced. And so, when you have those kind of situations, you don't get into a situation where you are proposing new programs, uh, ongoing money. And there have been some programs that have been proposed in that regard. And so, I'm really, really concerned about that, um, that we don't have the revenue to do that. Now, you can also cut programs, and some of those have been suggested that we're gonna, gonna have to cut some programs. But, um, generally during this period of time, you have a lot of generality, and you don't know exactly which one we have. So, even when you just look at, for example, this educational savings account, which I'm against, because it's requiring ongoing money. And, and when they say, well, that's not gonna take money away from public education, well, if it's not going into public education, it's taking it away from public education, as far as I'm concerned. But that's an ongoing program, a brand-new one. And there have been some others that have been, uh, suggested as well. And so, developing these new programs, that doesn't mean it may not be a good program. It's just that you have to look at what your finances are and what you can literally afford. And, uh, so that's a lot of questions that we don't know, even like with the educational savings account. We have no specifics, you know, we don't know any accountability. I mean, you think of one government program where you don't have accountability, what is dealing with taxpayers' money, and we've not heard that at all. And so, there's a lot of things that are floating around out there that, uh, you know, we haven't heard yet, and that's not necessarily unusual, but it's a pretty big deal what you're talking about. And I think you have to start having those conversations now as opposed to you get into the fray of things, and then you're working really hard to get things done. And a lot of things can happen very, very quickly. And, you know, the, why the, having a structurally, uh, balanced budget is so important is, you know, some of you, I couldn't say gray hair, but you don't have any hair. Well, there's a few of them down here. I want the bald head and the gray hair of some of those people. We can remember, we can remember the 10% cut, can we not?
Yes, we can.
Can we not? And that's what happens if you don't have a structurally balanced budget. That's what happens. The other thing that kept, that really concerned me is a lot, as you know, Governor Dugard and Lieutenant Edgar Michaels, it's so incredibly hard for our state to get a triple-A rating for bots. And, and, you know, the millions and millions of dollars that has saved our municipalities, our school districts across the nation because we did a better rating, right? And we don't have to pay as much in order to borrow money. Well, if you have a budget that's a little lackey, that can, can have an impact upon that. And so, that, you know, that part of it. And then, you know, some states, and South Dakota is not one of those, and I would certainly hope you would never do that. But, you know, we have 100% retirement, fully funded retirement, and that's really important. But if you get into these situations where, you know, you look at some states like Illinois, I think they, you know, they're 40% funded. And that's gonna be a real concern. So, that's why I guess they did kind of a big deal about, you know, having it structurally balanced. Of course, you know, then we look at what's being proposed for the, you know, the funding of public schools, and it's totally unrealistic, in my opinion. I mean, inflation rates 3.25, we live at a 1.25. And one cannot look at what state has done. And other argument is, well, the last few years, we've given this much, this much, this much, this much. And that's true. They don't talk about the fact of how far behind we were as a result of the 10% cut. And so, we still didn't get caught up. We're still, and now we're gonna go back behind again. Which is another reason we don't start new programs. You, you take care of the ones you have, and you, and you go from that standpoint. You know, we have big ticket items out there besides Medicaid. We have prison costs that's coming up, that's $850 million, and every year that it doesn't get done. And, and taking care of, it probably add another $100 million to that. So, we're getting close to $1 billion for, you know, a prison. You know, I personally, uh, you know, we had this, remember the sunsetting sales tax part of it? Myself and the former speaker, I think we're the only two legislators who voted against that because of the fact that we're concerned that as we came off the COVID high, you know, would we have the revenue in order to make that work? And I think it's showing that we don't. And so, that'll be talked about again because some people will make that permanent, and I'm not one of those. You know, from a personal standpoint, uh, public broadcasting, I think that's a terrible cut to make in that regard. And then we're putting more money in reserves. And, and of course, you need to have that. We already have 10%, went up to 12, it's not that way. You know, there's some good programs being presented, the school safety grants. But on the other hand, you know, you, you gotta be able to stand what you have, and so I'm concerned about that. And always, there's the questions of whether or not there could be some budget reductions in some of these. And I think there, there should be, and there is some. You know, you see some of these, uh, departments that are returning several million dollars back, and you can wonder why that's, they're not cutting that a little closer in that regard. So, there are a lot of things out there. You know, Representative Van Heisen, uh, has proposed, uh, you know, increasing on the sales tax. I, I was not able to go to the meeting last night to get some more, get some ideas or, and really understand it, so I'm really not prepared to, to talk about that. But I always, my always first question is, how's that gonna impact our public schools? That's my first question, then we go after that, to the good impacts that. And I'm not in favor of that, but... So, there's a lot of things that are going, the wheels are really moving. Uh, I appreciate, I get the emails from everybody. And, uh, as I've sent, uh, told people in the past, you know, don't sign up to these groups who, who they will then go to send you an email telling you this. You know, I wanna know what you have to say. And particularly, if you can be very specific as to, you know, how that impacts you, that is a lot better than saying, "I'm against it." And then sign, sign your name, that doesn't really, really much, much good. But keep track of, uh, Dr. Ken and I have an open, open invitation chatting. We get together and chat frequently on how things are going. You know, I'm concerned about special education and the funding in that regard. So, there's a lot of things to do, uh, out there. But I appreciate the opportunity to come, and I think it's a great opportunity to be able to come to share, you know, what I've learned about so far. And, um, so if you have any questions or comments, open to that.
Do you foresee, you know, attempts to fund that educational savings account from public education in the future?
Well, the governor's proposal is it's a 4 million deal, three years, an ongoing thing, and she hopes to expand on that. There are no indications, you know, I mean, the issue is, is you remember, I don't know, Dr. Ken and I, years ago, 'cause I didn't vote with that one either, where insurance companies, instead of paying it to the state, were allowed to, to set up a scholarships program. And each year, that started out as a small program, and now we're up to 5 to 7 million dollars in that one. And so, you know, that's the way how things go, is they start them slow, and then they start going up in that regard. It's very interesting that if you read the articles across the internet, the different states that have set up those kind of accounts, a couple of different things that have happened. For example, in Iowa, when they said they, they said how much money it was going to be, the private schools raised their tuition up so it equal what the state was doing. And so, that was kind of a bad thing, I'm like, oh, sorry for the private schools in that regard. Down in Oklahoma, where they've done it all the way across the board, the interesting part about that is they have, the key to those is accountability, you know? And the individuals that I've talked to that have been around here that are very much in support of it, their key thing is they don't wanna have any accountability. They just want them to write out a check. And then you start finding some of these places where, one of the articles I read, you know, they were buying grand pianos and paying for their, their skis or annual passes, and some of those things, you don't have any type of accountability. And, you know, it seems to me that, well, we're just taxpayers' money. You know, we should have accountability for it is, I can't think of any other programs that don't have that. And then, you know, the thing with the students is that what happens if the child just has some other program, and they don't have the accountability, then they go into the school district, right? And who's taking care of those? Who's making up the difference? And, uh, so that's why I think accountability is very, very much important, besides just the fact it's taxpayer money.
So, just a question as far as the revenue. Do, do you have a report, or do you know where the revenue is lacking as far as what's coming in? I mean, is our tourism down? Is our, I mean, we have such low unemployment, so if people are working, are they not spending their? I mean, do you get any kind of a recap like that that shows up?
Yeah, we can get a recap, but I didn't bring mine along, but it's pretty much across the board. I mean, there's a couple of them that are not. I mean, obviously, you know, they reinvest the money from some of the unclaimed property type of things. But generally, it's, it's down across, across the board. You know, people aren't spending money. That's what it, what it kinda comes down to. That's what it would kind of come down to.
My, on the educational savings account, you know, that has been proposed using $4 million, I too think that it will continue to grow. And, you know, it really is a voucher program, is what it is. And there's been a lot of research on voucher programs in other states across our country. And when that has been taken to a public vote, a voucher system, it has failed in every state that has taken it to a vote. And I would sure hope that South Dakota would not be any different than that if it ever came to a vote. And then a follow-up to the ESA that we were talking about, those educational savings accounts. It's my understanding that that money has been put in the Department of Education's budget, which is different than bringing it as a bill. Can you talk about that just a little bit?
Well, when you bring it as a bill, then you get, then it takes a two-thirds vote of the legislature. If it's in the budget, it takes a majority vote. And that's why it's so significant as to where it is placed in that. So then, the only way that you can really deal with it is in the appropriations process, where you try to get it defeated in committee. But if makes it in the bill, we don't have in South Dakota line item DPO authority from the legislature. So what happens is, is if it gets in the budget and makes it to the fore, you either vote the whole thing up or the whole thing down. And so then, you know, you're put in a pretty tough predicament in that regard.
Are there any questions, any other questions? All right, well, we thank you for taking the time to come speak to us.
Yeah, but I think it's an important thing for the legislators to come do.
I 100% agree.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're moving on to number nine. We're going to do one of our monthly Trailhead Learning Center updates.
Good evening, everyone. For those who don't know me, I'm Inspector Ossler, I'm the project superintendent for Magoth Construction. We're the general contractor. So, do I have to just quit? Sure. Actually, if you can go back to that last picture. So, right now, we're, we're in diehard finishing off the building mode. So I can tell you, it's starting to look like the picture, right? So, so this is our, our media center, media commons area. Actually, media commons looking at the media center through those walls right there. So the tile on, on that big set of stairway, that's two by, two inch wide by 15 inch tall tile. Someone will get 20 pups if they can tell me how many tiles are on that wall. But I lost count of like 500, so. But yeah, that, that should be a good depth for someone. But yeah, we're, we're starting to get all the high, high wall color area going on. And ceiling grid has actually started in the media center on, just on the other side of that wall today. So, you know, I, I always say, like this last month, this job site changes on a daily basis. Even after Nicole was on site on Friday, well, it's changed more today, and even on Saturday. So I could, they're working on Saturday as well. So, you can go. So, team members, you know, we have myself, project superintendent, we have Mark Sontega, project manager, Matt Anderson. He's our project engineer. And then, this is a, this is a list of, of everyone, you know, between the two architects with Kuphazard and Wold, down to the school board, Dr. Kendall Shering and, and the entire school board. So we're, we talk often, we have a big meeting again tomorrow. So, and then, you know, our executive, project executive, Ron Steppen and Dustin Lowell, our senior project manager. Couple of people that aren't listed on there that play a huge part, as well as Jason Nelson, he's our general superintendent. And then Jackie Ogley, she's our project coordinator, she does a lot of behind the scenes stuff as well. So, big shout out to them. Here's a list of our contractors. At any given time, you know, we have anywhere between 45 to 75 people on site just doing their piece of the puzzle. Not saying that the building is a puzzle, but it's, there's a lot of, a lot of manpower that it takes to, to do this project. And most of these contractors either come from Sioux City, Iowa, or they come from, from Sioux Falls, and they travel down there every day for this project. So, project progress update. So, some of our work, we did our exterior punch list right before Thanksgiving, and we had very minimal items. So, pretty proud of that. Also, the upper level areas B and C, which is the kindergarten rooms. Upstairs, that has been punched out with, it's 18 on 1126, so we're working through, going through that list and making sure all, all those items are, are done 100%, ready to basically put furniture in there. Remaining lower levels of area B and C, which is like the preschool, which is area B downstairs, and area C, which is junior kindergarten there. That is actually a typo, it's not, tomorrow, we're going to be doing that punch list on Thursday, the 12th. Okay, so we still have painting, ceramic tiling, ceiling grid, flooring, continued towards completion of area D and area A. So area D is like cafeteria, the kitchen. Okay, so if you guys saw some of the renderings early on, inside the cafeteria, you have that big 45 foot six coat wall, so we have the plexiglass hooks on there so the kids can hang up their, their coats and backpacks or whatever. And also with the ceiling grid, with the ceiling grid, we have those five leaf looking clouds that's going to be finished off tomorrow. So that's really taken shape, as well as some tile at the area bathrooms right there. The MEP rubens, so the boiler, which is going to be controlling all the hot water to like all the cabinet unit heaters and dust fuels and whatnot, supplying hot water to the building. We're doing a startup on that, on those boilers on Wednesday. So that's a huge milestone for us. So with the boilers starting up, then all the air handling units will, will be able to follow off that because it depends on hot water and stuff. Ceiling and wall fixtures, follow a ceiling grid and finishes are competing. So the electrician, they've crewed up, they're up to about 10 guys now right now, guys and a gal, so to say. They're putting in lighting fixtures, and we're getting close to doing an overhead inspection so where we can start putting ceiling pads on, and then we could do carpeting finishing. Our speaker, hydrostatic test, that should, that's, that's another typo there. It's going to be completed this week, so I had to have the stricker contractor fix a couple items that didn't look right to me. So, you agree that that was wrong, and he's fixing, down there fixing it today. So this is pictures of some of the wings. So as you guys can tell, there is not very many 90 degree angles in this building. So, just, you know, pass tours, just the smiles on everyone's faces, you know, come through these rooms and actually see what the finished product is almost there, is looking like. It's just priceless. As you guys can see, the, the vertical stripes right there, that's tack wall. So, you know, foam tends to be posed on there. I mean, we have a bunch of tack wall just in those quarters. And then just, I like to recognize the big open spaces. Okay, so there's just so many open spaces and so much natural light with all the, with all the glass that's in there. So, I'm really proud of this building. So, like I said, from the first picture, it's starting to look like the picture, right? So this is the same picture on the right, you know, on, on that rendering looking towards there. So that, that trim is going to be starting to get painted, you can see color on the walls. There's also glass in the small group room in that picture to the left where that gentleman in the, in the green is standing, that's, that's an old glass facade right there. So, it's looking really great. And then there is those plexiglass, right there in the cafeteria. As you guys can see, the ceiling grid is going up in the cafeteria. And that green trim right there, that's, that's another one of those leaf clouds that's going to be accenting the cafeteria. And then you have your bathrooms there to, to the left there, just, just off the gym and the cafeteria as well. So upcoming milestones, area D, E, and A punch list, which is cafeteria, the gymnasium, and the media center. That's those areas where we're working hard to get to that point where we can invite the architect and, and the owner out to walk through there, make sure that we cross all the Ts and dotted the Is and the lowercase Js. And then completion of just interior finishes. And then startup of area D food service, which is our kitchen food service. And then, hopefully here in Pee Wees, we're going to hand the, they go pile the keys over to, who? You Shering? We'll be able to just Shering. And, and we'll let you decipher what doors they go up to. So, any questions on that? Please.
This is the last time we'll have an update. Next January, or we will be?
Yeah, we have one more.
Okay.
Yeah, we can do that one in January.
All right, because before we turn it over, since I didn't know how the dates would work there. Okay, great.
All right, thank you, everyone.
I love you guys.
Thank you.
Okay, we're on to item number 10. We're going to have an update on I Love You Guys.
Hi, good evening, I'm Mr. Deckard, or Matt Deckard, sorry. Introduce myself as Mr. Deckard, seventh grader, so. I'm Matt Deckard, assistant principal at Yankton Middle School. And Mr. Schreli is already up here as well. We're going to kind of give some updates to our district safety plan with the I Love You Guys Foundation and that we've been doing this year and even from last year as well. I'm going to, we're going to start with, Mr. Schreli is here, is going to go through a reminder of what our standard response protocol is. Our SRP model that we introduced to staff in August this year. And he's going to kind of take you through a couple examples as well, so I'll, I'll come back here a bit. Okay, so just reviewing the standard response protocols. Five main procedures in the event of tough things going on within the, within the school. First one is hold. Hold is stay in your classroom and clear the hallways. This could, this could be pretty low level, pretty simple as far as the complexity of the situation. It could be an altercation in the hallway, could be a medical issue, needing attention or a maintenance cleanup during class changes. Staff just needs time to sort out the details of the situation, and that's examples of, of hold. Secure, get inside, lock outside doors. But the thing about secure is you can keep on going business as usual. Examples might be an unknown or unauthorized person on the grounds, a dangerous animal on or near the grounds, criminal activity in the area, or planned police activity in the neighborhood. So that's, so that's secure. But again, with secure and, and with hold really, we can continue to teach, continue to have, have an instruction going on. Lockdown, locks, lights out of sight. Example, again, the dangerous animal example within a school building or any intruder, an angry or violent individual, a report of a weapon, or an act of assailant. So lockdown, serious, now that's a serious situation that we, we practice within our schools. Evacuate to a location, could be a gas leak, unsafe situation in your school affecting release times. There could be a long range of things as far as, as far as an evacuation go. And then the last one is shelter for hazard using safety strategies. Example, severe, severe weather or other natural events may require, or require shelter, shelter in place. And this, this replaces a previous action taken. So those are the five main standards that we do. And we talk about, talk about hypotheticals a lot with the administrative team and staff. Just review that constantly to train our brains on, on what we should do and when for these situations. With that, Mr. Deckard will, will start going over the, kind of our previous timeline and what we've done so far, and what we plan on doing in the future.
So going back all the way to April 2024, last spring, myself, Tony Bestie, Jeremy Olson, went to Duluth, Minnesota to have a national, or to a state national safety conference where the I Love You Guys Foundation and founder John Michael Peace presented to a whole bunch of school administrators and law enforcement. Just kind of gave a brief introduction in, you know, a couple days where they went through the standard response protocol that we have and the SRM, which is the standard reunification method that we're also implementing here at Yankton as well. So that was kind of an introduction for myself. At the time, I didn't even know what reunification was. But, you know, getting more information and reading and talking with the I Love You Guys Foundation, you know, it's something that, all the way back in April, Yankton was ahead of the ballgame. And I still think we, we're definitely ahead of the ballgame as well. And I'll say that, you know, the state of South Dakota as well is promoting I Love You Guys throughout the whole state, and the Department of Homeland Security is as well. So, you know, way back in April, we were ahead of the ballgame by, by taking on I Love You Guys and making this part of our safety plan. From then in April, from last year all the way to August, Tony Bestie, Officer Olson, and myself had met a couple times with, well, one time with, you know, Yankton County EMS, emergency services, fire department, the police department, the county sheriffs, and a lot of just the emergency folks that, that if anything were to happen, you know, we just want to be on the same page. And I Love You Guys is, you know, that's a great goal for us, it's simplified language, everybody understands, including those emergency services. In our August in-service, we discussed and introduced the SRP model, the standard response protocol model to everybody. That, those posters went up, teachers got those from the principals right away in their flip charts. And that was right away in August, so they were educated on that right away, which is awesome. The public and parents were also educated, not only through messages to them, but also through social media, and our YSD Safety Night was on August 26th. And Tony Bestie did a great job of educating the public on, on the standard response protocol and any questions that might have, they might have had. It was just a great night to invite the public and educate them, which is, again, another great goal for us, is educating parents on our safety plan. So that was, that was some things that we did in August. Going through to October, we had another in-service where I Love You Guys actually came in, and they educated our staff and everybody on what the standard response protocol is. And again, what are some examples of how it happened in other districts as well? And we, and staff got an introduction as to what a reunification method is and what that might look like, which is what, you know, we've been planning, and I'll get into that in a little bit. But again, just educating on our staff on what if, a lot of what ifs, but also our steps, our protocols that we put in and put in place this year, and what that might look like, answering a lot of questions that staff might have without going into the weeds too much. So it was a great in-service to get educated, and, and I really felt, we really felt like we have a good grip on our safety plan, and we, and we work well with I Love You Guys. Here in November of 2024, we had one, a, a safety committee meeting with Dr. Kendall, Mr. Schreli, myself, and our two SROs, Officer Russelberger and Jeremy Olson. And we just kind of talked about our overall objectives for our safety plan in the district. We had the SRP implemented, now it's time to talk about what a reunification might look like. And we started planning, and we even pulled out this big thing and got really overwhelmed right away. But we, we took, it was a couple hours meeting and to go through the weeds a little bit. And we had to sit there, and we had to talk about those things and fill out the start, kind of starting from the administrative level on down. And it was a great meeting to have though, because, you know, you, you want to prepare, you want to be ready for an event and reunification process. And, you know, even coming from that meeting, we felt like it was really great to, to dig into the weeds a little bit. After that meeting, we kind of had what we called was a task force meeting, which was we talked about, or we talked with administrative people from the district level as well. And we talked about what some objectives, where they might fall in place into this big command chart. And, you know, they gave us some feedback, and it was really good to have. where they might fall in place into this big command chart, and, you know, they gave us some feedback, and it was really good to have, and, you know, again, you dive into the, the weeds a little bit and, and you kind of get into the minor details, key details of what if, you know, what if this happens and what if, but those are good things to think about and plan for a little, as much as you can. And then we brought all the principals in as well, and, and another, kind of a, well, a different administrative meeting, we discussed what each building level is going to look like and what their process would be if, you know, God forbid, an incident happens at the building level, and what a reunification process might look like district-wide too, and so we got into some details there as well. So we had about three meetings, safety meetings in November, really kind of diving into the weeds and getting some feedback and, and, you know, trying to get a visual of what a reunification process might look like. This December, we've had some building staff meetings, talking up just an overall view in general of what, you know, an incident command might look like, which an incident command would be, what, what a structure look like at your building if an incident occurred? So, you know, we had, we had a couple meetings as far as what teacher leadership, what their roles would be, what's been defined, what support staff meetings, we've had a couple of those, what, and then again, doing the same thing, defining what support staff, administrative assistants, where they would go, what their roles would be if an incident occurred. Again, I'm getting into the weeds a little bit, but, you know, onsite or at another building, what they would, what their process would be like and, and what it, what it, you know, what would you be doing, basically? And so diving into those and having those meetings has been really good this December. Going forward, you know, from year December all the way to our, our end date, as far as end date, I say, you know, is, we're going to practice our SRM, our reunification model in May, and I Love You Guys is going to come during in-service. So that's going to be really good for us to see, and that's kind of what we've been doing since August, is planning, and it's been a lot of planning, a lot of meetings, but we want to be ready for I Love You Guys to come in and say, wow, you guys are really ahead of the ballgame, and you guys really know what you're doing. And I, and we feel that, that we feel right now that we're, we're really ahead of the ballgame, and if an incident occurred that we would have a reunification plan, staff and support staff would know what we're doing, and, and it would be, we could handle it, and our, like I said, our plan is, is very strong right now, and it's been a long process here, but, you know, safety is top priority for us, so. Any questions?
No, I was there for junior achievement, I could see along the walls and the students were talking, we kind of tied it into what we were talking about with ethics and everything, so, appreciate the work so far.
Thank you.
Before we adjourn, I just wanted to take this time just to acknowledge our staff on what an amazing job they did last Thursday night when we had a pretty major incident that had nothing to do with any of our district, but regardless, stepped in, handled it well with, through the processes, and from all accounts, people were pleased with how it went. I, I just think it's odd, and I, we, we talked a lot about cell phones and how it ties into I Love You Guys and everything, I just think it's odd that I learned about it from my daughter, who heard it from a friend, who heard it from a grandma that was in there, and within, before talking to Wayne, and he's, if I remember right, running to get there, and so how quickly these things evolve and how difficult it is to stay on top of it, but from just level heads and handled it and kept the safety of our students and community firsthand, so I just want to thank you, Dr. Kendall, and everybody who was involved with that.
Can I make one comment last night? So, the board might remember when we spoke to you first about the I Love You Guys, one of the topics that came up was this whole cellphone piece, and, you know, that's, it's kind of controversial across the country right now whether or not kids should have cell phones, but I have to tell you, on Thursday night, when I spoke to the kids and everybody that was in the theater that night, one of the first things I told them was, get your phones out, and I want you to either text or call your parents and tell them that you're safe and tell them where you're at, and we won't release you until we're able to do so. And that we will update you, and then you can update them as we move along, and they did. And they shared their phones with others that didn't have it, but it was a great, quick way to communicate, and like they've taught us in this, if you teach kids when to use them, the right way to use them, they'll do that. And so I give a lot of credit to our students that night for them communicating with their parents, for those that were there.
All right, thanks again, and we'll move on to our final agenda item, the adjournment. Have a motion to adjourn, sell them, second. Have a motion and second meeting discussion, roll call please.
Good morning.
Yes, Jill.
Yes.
Jill.
Yes.
Carter. Yes. Here are adjourn.